America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember White. Good evening, Happy New Year, and welcome to January 6, 2021, Study Session of Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,912th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Wednesday, January 13, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. We do not have Councilmember Barr with us this evening. And the only announcement I have is just to, first of all, wish our City Finance Director, Mike Slater, a continuing recovery from an injury he suffered on Christmas Day. So, Mike, we wish you the best, and we're all keeping good thoughts and prayers for your continued recovery. And I'd just like to wish everyone a very happy New Year on behalf of the City Council. Yes, Councilmember Toy?
Are we under announcements, Madam President?
I was just under my announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll wait till you call.
That's all right. And then I was going to go to council announcements. So now I am to council announcements.
If I may have the floor, Madam Chair.
Please.
Oh, thank you. You know, over at Silver Village, we have quite a few seniors. And they're all very special to all of us. And there's one in particular that, if I get the number right, she's turning 101 today. And any reason that, no, Alice, please, you know, wish her a happy 101st birthday. We could only be so lucky to get to that. And Alice is in pretty good health, very spry person and very intelligent lady. So, next time you see Alice, I don't mean to reveal her age, but at that age, I'd want mine revealed as well. So, happy, happy birthday, Alice. And just one more thing, we've been having a lot of problems with those bags. As I know Rob put in an ordinance on those as well. And others, we all supported it. We don't want those bags of whatever newspaper that is. They do good work, but they're throwing them all over lawns in Livonia. We all know that. But we were able to get, and I used it last night, everyone, and I'm sure some of you had Jennifer set up from the mayor's office, where people can go in and unsubscribe and leave their name and address so that they don't get those newspapers. It won't happen right away, because it's a city ordinance, thanks to the council and Rob and others. So, I just wanted to share that with folks. And if they call the council office, I'm sure they'll be glad to give them that email, Madam President, and others as well. So, there's a little solution for you. Just leave your name, address, and your email, if you have one, and you're good to go probably in about two to three weeks. And that's it. That's all I need to report tonight, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Toy. Anyone else from the council have any announcements? Councilmember Donavick?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilman Toy. I know a lot of people get frustrated with that, so thanks for your hard work on that. Laura, I wanted to wish my brother Tony a happy birthday, 24 years old. Unfortunately, he had to spend his birthday at the hospital, a little different than 101 years old. But he had to spend his birthday at the hospital. He got a scratch on his hand, which turned into a huge infection, and he didn't have the best 20 for his birthday. But he's a tough kid, and I want to wish you a happy birthday, Tony. And hopefully you get to 101 years old. Love you, Tony. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, and happy birthday to your brother Tony. And we are glad to hear he's on the mend. Anyone else have any announcements? All right. Well, at this time, we will go to audience communication. And as always, we will ask our council parliamentarian, the Honorable Kathy White, if she would please read the rules for audience communication.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The rules are as follows: Members of the public audience at the meeting shall not speak until they are recognized by the chair. Each person recognized by the chair to address the council shall identify himself or herself by name and, if appropriate, group affiliation. A person addressing council on an item on the agenda shall be limited to two minutes, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present, and shall be recognized to speak prior to council's consideration of the item. There will be an audience communication section of not more than 30 minutes duration at the beginning while council regular and study meetings, where citizens may address the council. There will also be an audience communication section at the end of all regular and study council meetings, where citizens may address the council on any matter that is not on the agenda of that meeting. Citizens who wish to expand upon their remarks will be asked to reduce the matter in writing and submit it to the city clerk, and such item may be placed on a future council study session for further consideration. A person addressing council under the audience communications portion of the agenda will be limited to a total of three minutes at each study or regular meeting, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present. A citizen may address the council once during audience communication. If the citizen has addressed the council during the first audience communication period at the beginning of the meeting, the citizen will not be permitted to address the council again during any audience communication period at the end of the meeting. Anyone addressing the council shall make responsible comments. Personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks are not permitted. Anyone causing a breach of the peace may be removed from the council meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Councilmember White. So, at this time, we go to audience communication. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council this evening on any subject not on this evening's agenda? All right, calling once, calling twice, third call. Seeing that no one wishes to, is coming forward to address the council, we will move forward with the rest of our meeting. Tonight's meeting is a study meeting. There are no votes taken this evening. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the agenda of the regular meeting of Wednesday, January 13, 2021, where they will officially be voted upon. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please use the Raise Your Hand button on your Zoom, or if you're joining us by phone, please press *9 when the item is called, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. When you are called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes. It will also let the council members and the audience members know who is speaking to them. And at this time, we start with our first agenda of the new year and new business. Item number one is a request for consideration of a proposed ordinance amendment to require all animals be held on a leash when off the owner's property, with exceptions at the city dog park within a confined area or police canine unit. And we have, I see a name called Stone. I'm going to recognize that person. And oh, no, let's see. Now I see Steve Johnson. All right.
Madam President?
Mr. Johnson, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, President McIntyre and other members of the city council. I represent a group of residents that are concerned about the growing number of loose dogs that are being run near our homes. Although we recognize the need for people to exercise their dogs, because of the unpredictable nature of animals and the risks that loose dogs pose, the public safety is being put in jeopardy. The large vacant piece of land that we live next to has become a magnet for individuals and groups who bring their dogs to run loose there. We feel our safety is being compromised daily, with dogs running onto our properties and often out of sight of their owners. Because the land is private property, the current leash ordinance does not apply there. Professionals we have consulted agree that reasonable control outside of a confined area is only gained when an animal is held by a leash. As I have shared with you by email, other nearby cities do indeed define reasonable control as animals being held by a leash when outside of a confined area. Livonia has a sensible solution to those who want to run their dogs off-leash. It is the Livonia Dog Park inside the Bicentennial Park. There is also the Wayne County Dog Park near Farmington Road on Heinz Drive. In these locations, dogs are allowed to run loose in a controlled environment and are required to be licensed as well as up to date on their shots. We are requesting the council amend the current ordinance and require animals be leashed when off their owner's property, unless in a dog park, confined in a fenced area, in a vehicle, or if it is part of a canine unit. We want to thank Councilman McCullough and Councilman Donavick for their support in our efforts for this change, and the entire council for considering this important public safety matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. There are others from the audience that wish to speak, but I will ask council if you have questions to ask of Mr. Johnson before I go to other members of the audience. Seeing that, I will then go to the, oh, Councilmember White.
Sorry, I didn't hit the button, raise hand button soon enough. Yeah, I do have a question for Mr. Johnson. Being that the major problem here has been the dogs running loose on school property, have you approached the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools about the issue? And if so, what has been their response? I have seen some of the emails. I know you have corresponded with them. But has this matter been formally brought to them?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember White. We have contacted the schools. Their position is that they cannot regulate the area properly. This area is not only Livonia Public Schools, it's also private property of the church, which is an unfenced area. So, we've made appeals to both the schools and the private property owners, and have been met, have not gotten any response whatsoever. They don't seem to be interested in enforcing the current rules. We were told in conversation with the Animal Control Officer, if they would make a complaint, then they could enforce it. But they don't seem to be interested in having any type of enforcement on the property.
Okay, and through the chair, Mr. Johnson, have these discussions been, has it been to a board meeting?
Yes, it has. I've had comments made to the board at one of their Zoom meetings. And we've called there and spoke to their representative, Mr. Francis, and have written letters to them and emails. We've shared videos with them, as we've shared with the council of loose dogs running in the area. So, they're well aware of the situation, and they're just choosing not to address the matter.
Through the chair, I just want to say, because of my long tenure with the city, and I think Councilmember Toy can comment on this as well, that this has come up in the past, over the years, with the city council. It does tend to open a door where you get some very lively discussion on both sides. There's a very strong, in the past, anyway, there's always been a very strong contingent of folks that want to be able to take their dogs places and not on a leash because they feel that their dogs do obey the commands of the owner. There is also an equally ardent group of folks usually that have the same opinion that you do, Mr. Johnson, that a leash law promotes public safety and is a good thing for a community. So, I just want to remind everybody that this does tend to bring out a lot of folks on both sides. And in the past, because of the great difference of opinion on either side, the council has not gone forward with requiring a leash law. So, I'm open-minded on this. I'm willing to hear from anybody who has an opinion on it. But I just kind of want to caution everybody that that tends to be the history.
Can I respond, council?
Thank you. Yes, just a minute, Mr. Johnson. I'm going to, Councilmember Jolly, did you want to speak before Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, if I could, Madam President. Thank you for recognizing me. So, we had addressed, not specifically the dog issue on this property. I think we addressed remote control airplanes at the behest of Mr. Johnson, if my memory serves me correctly. When we went to the law department to get advice and counsel in regards to what we could and could not do in the past regarding this, there seems to be a lack of understanding of what we can control and what we cannot control on school property. Because schools do have their own elected bodies, they are entitled to make their own rules and their own regulations as to their property. There's also limitations on what we can do in terms of enforcement of some things on private property. Mr. Bernier, can you kind of shed some light as to what your opinion is on the matter? And I'll tell you, I'm confused about it because I know, and I'm sure Councilmember White would say the same thing. We've all spent a lot of time in the district court, and we've all seen prosecutions of city ordinances on school property in some sense, right? Whether it's, you know, one in particular comes to mind of throwing a missile, which is, a kid was throwing a rock, and it's against school ordinance, or, excuse me, city ordinance, and he was prosecuted for it. There's other things that happen as well. And the schools also do post on a lot of their properties big signs that say, you know, playing golf or doing this or that is against city ordinance, and people who do so will be prosecuted. So anyways, I'm just wondering, even if we wanted to go down this road, what effect and what ability do we have to do it?
There were a lot of questions asked in that one question. I'll try to answer as many as I can remember. The first one is, the school property is, as far as the city of Livonia is concerned, it is treated like private property because the Livonia Public Schools is a completely separate legal entity than the city of Livonia. We don't have a lot of jurisdiction over a lot of things that happen on the school property. It's a lot of things we do. For instance, if a criminal act, crime takes place on the school property, we certainly can enforce our criminal laws that take place on there. A lot of the things that we don't have any jurisdiction over are the zoning-type issues when it comes to the property. Now, should the school enforce a no-dog-on-their-property rule? We could probably enforce that, but they don't do it. They don't have a rule. They don't have it posted. There's nothing to tell anybody if you have your dog off-leash, it's a trespass. There's nothing to say that it's a violation of their rules. So, until they come to us and say, "We have asked them to leave our property, to leave our property, and they won't do it, it's not a trespass." So, there's nothing we can enforce on that. We don't enforce school board rules. We enforce the criminal law as such. So, if there's a violation of the criminal law, such that they're asked to leave the property, and they won't leave the property, then it becomes a trespass, and we could enforce that. To date, nobody has told us, nobody has gone to the owners or posted and saying, "No trespass, it's trespassing to be on there with your dogs off-leash." I guess the next question is, could we have a leash law? Absolutely, we could have a leash law within the city. But that's a political decision, as Councilmember White brought up, that I'm ill-equipped to discuss. That's a decision for the council and people smarter than me to decide. We just enforce it.
Can I respond?
Hi.
Madam President, if I can just have one follow-up real quick, and then I'll be done.
Please, Mr. Jolly.
And Mr. Bernier, so you're saying that if we were to enact a leash law, a police officer or a animal control officer employed by the city of Livonia could enforce such ordinance on school property without a complaint of the property owner?
I would want to do some investigation on the law on that before I give you an answer on that. However, if you do do that, you're also saying that I can't take my dog to your house and take it off-leash. It's a difficult question. Because we can't just have an ordinance to say, "Near Mr. Johnson's house, on the school property, it has to be on a leash." But at Mr. Jolly's house, it can be off-leash. Either we have a leash law in Livonia, or we don't have a leash law in Livonia.
And these are the exact things that we would have to find out answers to if we wanted to proceed with this. And then, that's my input. So, thank you very much.
But, you know, like I said, to date, we haven't had, I have never, this is not, as we know, as Councilmember White said, is not a new issue to council or to the law department. To date, I have never had the Livonia Public Schools call us up and ask that we enforce a leash law or kick anybody off their property for having the dog off-leash on their property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernier. Mr. Johnson, you wanted to address the council?
Yes, the first issue about school property, and it is declared private property. I've given you numerous examples of other cities, and I would ask you, and I'll send the email again, that cover school property as well as off of the owner's property. So, if I brought my dog over to your house, as long as my dog was confined in a confined area, it'll be in a fenced area, then you would be fine. So, you know, realistically, you're not going to take your dog over to a friend's house and then just let it off-leash and run loose. The other issue that Councilperson White brought up about this issue has been raised before. The difference now, and I talked to the Animal Control Officer, and she was part of the group that wanted to get the more stringent laws enacted. The difference now is after December of 2017, we have a Livonia Dog Park where people can run their dogs off-leash if they wish to. And it's in a confined area. I would think that the wisdom of the council at the time, and some of you were in the decision-making process for it, was public safety was probably towards the top of the list, if not the top of the list. So, what's happening here, we have people coming from other cities, bringing their dogs onto this property. And it isn't just a few dogs. This is, we counted 40 dogs last summer in just a six-hour period. So, what has this become is an unlicensed, and unregulated, and unsafe dog park. Like I say, the property is split. The church owns half of it, the schools own half of it. So, we're not restricting the church. If the church owner wanted to run his dog out there, that would be fine. But for the church to just allow people to just come, you know, by the carloads with animals and individuals and groups of dogs and let dogs run, they don't have a fenced area. A lot of the houses over here don't have fenced yards. So, this is why we've had close calls. I've shared with the council a video of a husky that was loose in the woods. We never even saw the owner of the dog, but the dog almost intersected with two young boys. And that was only a six-minute video. If we would have called Animal Control, they wouldn't even have gotten out there by that time. The boys, thankfully, they got away, but one of the boys fell in the creek trying to escape from the dogs. So, it's a daily problem. If this was not a growing problem, we would not have brought it to the attention of the council. And I might add that over a year ago, I contacted all of the council members and invited them out to the property. I know that I met Councilman McCullough there. I know Councilman Donavick visited the property. I'm sorry if others have visited that I didn't know of. And they recognized the problem, and both have indicated they would be advocates for a change.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. At this time, I will recognize Councilmember Toy and then Councilmember McCullough. Councilmember Toy?
Thanks so much. I just wanted to make a comment about Councilwoman White's good memory. And thank you, Mr. Johnson. This issue has come up time and time again. And with two new council members on, just recall on Mr. Donavick, now looking into the issue, perhaps, you know, something deeper can be done, you know, in regards to some of that, regardless of what's going on with the property. I get the legal stuff, but I also get that there's an issue out there. And it's still, it's still there after all these years. And it's unfortunate, but, you know, maybe our two new guys have some good solutions to it possibly. And I know Mr. McCullough's worked real hard as well on that. So, you know, I'd be an advocate to take a closer look, Madam Chair and others, as we go through this, with the guidance, of course, from our expert attorney and attorneys. Thank you. And thank you, Councilwoman White, for remembering all that.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. I have visited the property. I have seen, obviously, I've had some correspondence with Mr. Johnson. I, you know, I have two yellow labs. I'm a dog lover. But I always have my two crazy pups on a leash anytime I go out. I do see that there is a need. I don't like the fact that there are dogs that can roam. I have tried to bridge the gap a little bit with the schools. I think that is a great opportunity there. I think there is a disconnect between this matter and schools. I think it's something that could be easy for them to adopt this. And, you know, especially having a child that sometimes visits playgrounds, having dogs jump around. Obviously, that's not a decision we can make. But something like this, I've kind of done some research on different ordinances that are around in neighboring communities. And there are numerous communities that do have a variant of the leash law that seems to be working, where it kind of deems more open space rather than a fenced yard. Obviously, I don't have all the answers here, and obviously, there's a lot of legalities that go into this. For that, I would be, I'd like to offer a motion to move this to the Law and Education Committee, if I may.
All right. Thank you. So, Mr. McCullough has offered a motion to refer this to the Law and Education Committee. All right. Before I go to the audience, Councilmember Donavick?
Thank you, Madam President. I think that's a great recommendation, Councilman McCullough, to investigate this and look deeper into it, and speak to some of the members of council that were present when this topic was brought up before. In a perfect world, the school board and LPS would look into this and figure out some way to control unleashed animals on their property. And that's currently, from my understanding, not happening. So, I feel like it is up to us to look into issues that are affecting residents of our city. And I've been to the property, and during the summertime, beautiful day outside, there's tons of dogs that I saw, at least on the particular day that I was there, that were running around on leash. And I have two dogs. I'm a big dog guy. I love my dogs. But at the end of the day, there has to be, there's got to be some sort of control when you have multiple dogs running around in an area that is not confined, that has no control. Luckily, we have a beautiful dog park right down the street that residents can enjoy. Beautiful park, and I recommend people take their dogs there. It's a lot of fun, meet a lot of great Livonia residents. But I'm not here to, you know, tell people what they can or cannot do with their own dogs. It's not my intention. But from my perspective, when you are on public property, you are affecting the lives of residents next door and other people that are just bringing their children to the park to enjoy the playground equipment or to enjoy a nice day outside. Thank you for your time, Madam President.
Thank you. All right. At this time... Thank you. Um, all right. At this time, I will go to the audience. We'll begin with, uh, Stone, and I'll ask you, Stone, if you would please, um, give us your, uh, first and last name and your address.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Wendy Stone. I live in, um, Nottingham Woods subdivision. We are adjacent to a public school, but that's not really my issue. My address is three one nine two five Belmooral Court. My issue is with, um, a neighbor who walks, who never controls his animal, ever. And last night, this dog attacked our family. We were walking down the street. This dog came from behind the house. We were nowhere near it and charged our family. And it was very scary. And this homeowner didn't even care. So this morning, I had to call Animal Control because we're afraid to come out of our house. Because this person doesn't control his animal, never walks the dog on a leash. The dog is in everybody's yard, poops everywhere. He takes it on the school grounds, lets the dog run loose. When he yells for the dog, the dog never comes. Yesterday, he sauntered from behind his house and was casually calling his dog. And his dog was about ready to attack us and bite us. And we were in the street. So yes, I think we need a leash law. Our subdivision doesn't have a lot of fenced yards. All of our properties are over a half acre. And most of us don't have fences. We do because we have a pool and that's an ordinance. So these people who have a dog should have some sort of fence or have the invisible fence. Or if they're outside, this dog has to be on a leash. It was horrible.
Uh, Ms. Stone, I'm, I'm very, very sorry for your experience. And I do understand from personal experience how traumatic that is. So, um, thank you for calling in to share your experience and your perspectives. I know Mr. Jolly would like to say something. Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, so, Mr. Burnier, I, I hate to go back to here and, to, to you in regards to this. But so, and it's good for us to hear from residents in regards to this, kind of fully flesh out the issue. The woman who just spoke described a situation that to me is already covered under our ordinances as an animal-at-large and could be prosecuted. A- and connecting those dots, if these other dogs are causing, uh, problems or disruptions to Mr. Johnson or his property or his neighbor's property, I would think that those same dogs and their owners could be prosecuted under an animal-at-large ordinance that we, we do have. Is the only holdup to the Livonia Public Schools for Mr. Johnson's situation here that they're just not interested in, in making a ruling against this, the saying you can't do this?
There, there are two different issues when I heard, I believe it was Ms. Stone talking. One is the dog from, if, and I have no doubt that what she's saying is true. If this dog is attacking people, that's a, at least a potentially vicious dog and/or a, or a vicious dog. So that is covered no matter where that takes place. If that takes place on school property, your property, my property, or on the city street, anywhere. If, if you have a potentially dangerous animal, that is a violation of our ordinance, no matter where that takes place. The dog at large is the bigger problem because that's on private property. Okay. And, and the, our ordinance talks about a dog being under reasonable control. That, of course, is always subject to interpretation too. What is reasonable control? Cause there are people who can control their dogs off-leash. A lot of people can't. I completely agree with that sentiment. Uh, but the, the dog off, the animal off-leash, that is more of a problem. That is the one that's a problem with the school, not the vicious animal. So if we have an animal that's attacking or menacing, we could still prosecute no matter where it is for the potentially or the vicious animal.
Okay.
The, the, off-leash is the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Toy?
Thank you again, Madam President. I just wanna interject, uh, a little history, if you will. We had, um, a situation, I think Dot Knapp was our attorney then, Mr. Burnier. Um, but, um, we had a woman come in and, Miss Stone, my condolences as well. Um, but, uh, she had a little dog, I believe it was a Yarkie. She walked it on a leash. And, um, a certain breed of dog, um, came up and, um, basically killed the dog right in front of her. And so that's when we got into what I think Mr. Burnier's saying, that vicious, vicious animal, uh, situation, uh, as well. And we actually, you know, coined it Matty's Law because the dog's name was Matty. And, um, I remember that because it was such a standout and maybe, uh, Councilwoman White remembers that as well. But, um, there is precedence on some of that, if you will. And we do have that ordinance, uh, already. So hopefully, the woman, Mrs. Stone, was well advised of, you know, what to do in her situation, um, you know, in regards to that. So I just wanna interject that. I, I, I don't mean to tell you, you know, when Lincoln was shot or any of the rest, but you know what I'm saying. I was trying to give you a little history there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanna comment on Mrs. Stone's situation. I've had that experience twice. Once walking our dog and a dog rushed out of somebody's property. The gate had been left open and, you know, uh, there was a concern that we were, either I or my dog was going to get bitten by the dog. It was very aggressive. That fortunately did not happen. But another situation where my daughter was walking our very large ninety-pound mastiff near, i- in a city park. And again, a dog from a property that adjoined the park ran out, again, a gate had been left open or somehow the dog had gotten out of the owner's property to the chagrin of the owner and started, this was a little tiny dog attack, attacking our big mastiff. And, um, the only way to get the dog away from our large dog was my daughter's boyfriend had to, had to kick the little dog with his boots in order to get that dog away. And, and the owner who did finally come out was, was just, as I said, just, you know, chagrined that this had happened. So I am sympathetic to, um, those circumstances. Um, but I also, I don't want us to get in a situation where we're lumping every kind of situation together because I do think there are dog owners who, who, uh, have very good control over their dogs when they're not on a leash. So again, I'm open-minded. I haven't really reached a, a conclusion in my own mind, one way or the other. And I do appreciate this dialogue and I do wanna hear what residents have to say, um, before voting on this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember White. And, um, I'm going now go to Julie Backus. And I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, Ms. Backus. And, uh, um, I'm gonna need Casey's help because Ms. Backus, Ms. Backus, again, I apologize. We have to, um,
I'll let her in.
To, uh, make a little change here to allow you to, um, to speak because you have an older version of Zoom. So I'm not sure. Oh, there you are.
Is that better?
Yes. And I, I need to tell you, because of what I had to do, you're, you're now on video with us. So if...
Yes. I, I covered my, uh, I covered my...
Okay, that's fine. I was just gonna, I was just gonna alert you so you could turn off the video or cover your camera if you wanted to.
Thank you. Um,
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for letting me speak, counsel. Um, my name is Julie Backus. Um, I live at three zero six three zero Janine. And, um, I also live, um, adjacent to the property that Mr. Johnson spoke about. And, um, I've been here two years. And over the two years, I have witnessed a ever-increasing number of loose dogs on the property. Um, and I have dogs myself and young children and have found myself, um, unfortunately avoiding the property in many cases um, for fear of a run-in with the dogs that are running loose. Um, when I have been on the property, um, I, my dogs have been on leash and, um, they've been approached by other dogs. And, um, my children have been approached by dogs off-leash also. Uh, thank goodness, we've never had a very, um, bad circumstance come up. But I don't, I don't ever want to have that happen. Um, and I wanted also say that, you know, I appreciate that, um, LPS and the church let people use the property because it's a great, big, open field, um, that could be used for lots of activities. And so it's very nice that they have it open to everybody. But, um, I think to have, you know, um, residents' freedoms infringed upon by people who feel that they can use it how they feel, um, and putting this, um, public safety at risk potentially is not acceptable to me. And, um, I also have done my own research about the communities surrounding us, have similar thing, um, things in place. And I think that it really comes down to the wording of reasonable control and that it needs to be better defined. Um, that's up to interpretation certainly. And, um, not everyone would define it the same way and use it the same way for their own animal. Um, so I would really urge the council to adopt better language to define that, to put the safety of everyone, um, at the forefront. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Backus. Really appreciate your, uh, your comments and, uh, taking the time to communicate with us. Thank you. Um, before I go back to, to council, I, I would just like to ask a, a question. And, and that is, and maybe it's, I'm not sure if it's Mr. Burnier or really to my, to my colleagues, I guess, to both. We have an existing law, right, about, about, uh, having dogs under control that's not complied with. And when it's not complied with, the problem is, by the time the non-compliance and the threat happens, i- it's gone. It's evaporated. And so enforcement is very difficult. We have leash laws in all of our nature preserves and all of our nature trail. And I'm, I'm, uh, many of those trails frequently with my dog, we go on a leash. And I can tell you how many dogs we encounter, most times we're on the trails who are not on leashes. Now, some of those dogs are well-behaved and fine. There've been a number of occasions where we've come around a bend and all of a sudden, there's a dog charging at you and the owner's trying to get under control. We, we've also encountered dogs who are on leashes that the, the owners had no business having them out even on leashes because they were barely controllable. In those situations, by the time, again, by the time it happens, it's over. And, and obviously, if there's, if somebody's hurt or a dog is attacked, which at, at that point, it's way, way too late. But how do we, how does a leash law get us to compliance or the ability to enforce? And I don't mean that as a rhetorical question. I, I really mean that as a, as a point of consideration as we look at, you know, the, the complexity and difficulty of this issue. So I wanted to raise that. All right. Does anyone else have any comments or, uh, anything else they'd like to offer on this item? All right. We have a, uh, motion from Councilmember McCullough. Is that from you, Mr. McCullough, correct? To refer this to the Law and Education Committee. All right. Thank you. Now we go on to item number two. This is a tax request for the Wayne County Art Institute Authority for the year 2020. This comes to us from the Office of the City Clerk to set the tax rate to be levied and requesting that be collected as a winter tax.
Madam President?
Yes?
I'd like to offer an approving for consent. This is a, uh, pro forma function of the city council to take, uh, tax requests as the city processes them. And that same applies to the next two items as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Jolly. Item number three is a tax rate request for the Wayne County Zoological Authority for the year 2020. Comes to us also from the Office of City Council, City Clerk, to set the rate of tax to be levied and requesting that be collected as a winter tax. Mr. Jolly?
I'll offer the same approving for consent. It is not a city issue, but, uh, pro forma out of, uh, courtesy.
Thank you. Item number four, tax rate request for the Huron Clinton Metropolitan Authority for the year 2020. Comes from the Office of the City Clerk to set the rate of tax to be levied and requesting that be collected as a winter tax. Mr. Jolly?
I'll do the same, uh, approving for consent. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I, I should have asked if there were any objections or if anyone from the audience was to comment. Seeing none. We will move on to item number five. This is a request to approve salary and fringe benefit adjustments for the classification of fire chief and deputy chief. This comes to us from the Civil Service Division for the period of December first, twenty eighteen through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And at this time, I'm going to recognize Mrs. Nice Mayor, our, uh, Director of Human Resources for the city of Livonia. Good evening, Ms. Mayor.
Good evening, Madam President, and Happy New Year to you and all of our councilmembers. It's nice to see everyone. Um, back in October, the Civil Service Commission and City Council approved a three-year collective bargaining agreement for our Livonia Firefighters Union covering the period of December first, two thousand and eighteen through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. And it, it historically, the salary and benefit adjustments negotiated between the city and the firefighters' union are extended to the fire chief and the deputy fire chief as well. Um, in November, the Civil Service Commission approved and recommended submission to council these, um, the updated salary schedule and associated benefit changes for these two classifications. So I am before you this evening seeking approval for the, uh, related benefit changes and salary, um, the three-year salary schedule for the deputy fire chief and the fire chief.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Council? Questions, uh, action?
Madam President?
Uh, Councilmember Jolly?
If I could, I'll, I'll add this for consent as well. This has been the past practice of the city. There's no reason to deviate at this time. Thank you.
All right. Any, uh, comments, discussion, anyone from the audience? Seeing none? We'll go on to item number six. This is a request to approve location, schedule, dates and times for the twenty twenty-one Board of Review meetings, as well as compensation rate, rates for the members. This comes to us from the Department of Assessment for the requirements of the state of Michigan statute, MCL two one point three zero. Is that? I didn't know if, uh, um, I think Ms. Goslin, our, uh, our city assessor, would like to, uh, speak to us on this issue. Good evening, Goslin.
Good evening, counsel. Linda Goslin, city assessor. Uh, this is an annual request that comes before you each year to approve the dates and times of our board review as well as the compensation for our board members. Uh, the board will meet five days in one evening to hear valuation as well as hardship appeals.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Goslin. Um, I, uh, Councilmember White, I believe I saw your hand first.
Yes, this is, uh, really a housekeeping item and I would offer approving and consent if there's no objection.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Toy?
Uh, I can just say it's nice to see, um, Ms. Goslin at our council meeting. She does such an excellent job in the assessor's office. Um, I had the privilege of working with them for many years in their jury. Just ve- very professional and good people. Um, and kudos to you guys. Thanks so much for all you do, Linda.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
All right. So we have, uh, approving offered and consent. With that, we move on to item number seven. This is a request to approve purchase of Mac Jim flooring through the Sourcewell Purchasing Program. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation. I, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember McCullough, did you have something to offer on the previous item? Okay. This comes to us from the Parks and Recreation Department. And I think I said to replace existing Mac flooring from budget funds. And I see that Mr. Davis, our Director of Parks and, and Recreation is with us this evening. Uh, Mr. Davis, good evening and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you, Council President Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We're asking council to approve, uh, Mac Jim flooring project. The, the flooring we currently have in there is original to the facility. Um, it's fine for some purposes, but for any, uh, ball, sports, basketball, in particular, pickleball, uh, i- it is defective and it has dead spots in the floor. Uh, we are looking to, uh, replace that with a Robins Polastic Classic sixty, which is a six-millimeter floor. It's, uh, very similar. Actually, it's the same type of flooring that's currently in the Schoolcraft College volleyball facility. If you've seen that, that's pretty nice. Um, this would allow us to continue our multi-sport activities there. This would allow us to continue our multi-sport activities there, providing a better surface for basketball and pickleball players. We are looking to use Sourcewell Purchasing Program, which does meet our purchasing ordinance. And we're asking that council approve a contract in the amount of $116,589.50 with Foster Specialty Flooring. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I saw Mr. McCullough's hand up first and then I'll recognize him with the Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam President. To the chair, to Mr. Davis. One sport, as well as ball hockey, I think that we play there. But no, this is, this is an incredible enhancement. I did have one question. Do you know, is the, is it going to be striped the same way that it currently is existing?
I believe to answer your question, it'll be striped for the most part. I don't think we're adding volleyball court lines in it. So there'll be a few less lines than what are currently in the floor.
Thank you. As I said, I'm an avid ball hockey player. I'm on this rink usually two times a week and super supportive of this upgrade. So I'd be happy approving for consent if there are no objections.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. I see indicated we go next to Councilmember Toy and then to Councilmember Donovan. Councilmember Toy.
No, just a great idea to echo Mr. McCullough. But I did want to ask if I may, Madam, I don't have my notes right in front of me. Is Foster a local company, if you will? Do we know, where are they out of? City-wise or?
Councilmember Toy, they are out of Wixom. They are the local distributor and installer for this type of flooring.
Awesome. Great. Great job. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
And I'm president. Thank you, Councilmember Toy. Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Davis, just out of curiosity, when looking at the package, you know, it's a large purchase for flooring. How long do, does the city, do you expect to use this floor? I mean, should the floor be in good condition for 10 years, 15 years, five years? What do you estimate?
That's a great question. Thank you for asking that. There's a 10-year warranty on this floor. We looked at facilities that had this floor for 15-plus years without issues. So, I mean, I would expect it to last as long as our current floors last, which that might be up for a little debate. But I would say 15 years would be our goal on this. And again, it's a large area. That's why it's, it is a large dollar figure, but you're talking about 10,000 square feet of flooring. So it is significant.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I look forward to watching you play pickleball for additional 15 years.
That is not going to happen, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. So we have, I believe, Councilmember McCullough offered an approving on consent without any objections. All right. So next we go on to item number eight. This is a request to authorize purchase of a Dell Power Store 1000T SAN. This comes to us from the Information Systems Department to increase storage capacity from budgeted funds.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I have no hand to put up, so this is all right. This is a proposal for a Dell Power Store storage area network that will replace our current storage for the city's virtual environment. Our current storage holds 30 separate virtual servers for the city and is nearing full capacity. This new system will give us 30% growth and giving us 44 terabytes of usable space with the ability to expand further as needed. Dell is giving us state contract pricing in the amount of $71,038.93. And that includes a five-year warranty as well as installation and support. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I do have a, I do have a question and it's a general question, Casey.
Sure.
As we move to the cloud, which we've done, right?
Yes, so.
Our need for, our need for storage capacity, physical storage capacity diminishes. Is that correct? But we still, we still.
To some extent, but we're growing digitally at a faster rate, I'd say. So we still have some things on site and some of the things on site are actually in the cloud. So it's kind of a mixture of all those technologies.
Okay. And again, this was just kind of a, a general question because I think that at sometimes a point of confusion that, you know, that we'll approve expenditures, significant expenditures to move to the cloud and everyone understands why that's done and why that's needed. But at the same time, we'll be, we'll be needing additional storage, physical storage space. And I think you just answered the question, right?
Yeah, we definitely need on site.
It should go to the cloud. And because everything now, right, is digital at an increasing rate, we still need additional storage.
Right. Cloud is just someone else's computer.
Right. Council.
Madam President, I'll offer an approving for consent.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Donovan. Oh, okay. Councilmember Jolly has offered approving on consent. Thank you. And, and I need to back up to item number seven. I thought that I heard Mr. McCullough offered on consent. I'm sorry.
Didn't he? Yeah, he did.
It was consent.
Item one, we're talking about, Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. McCullough made the motion to put it to the committee, but didn't say whether it was on consent or on the regular agenda.
I would be happy to put it on consent if there are no objections.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Burnier. And I really did think I was losing my mind because I thought I had said and heard consent about three times and I thought, man.
You did. It was, it was on item number one.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, never mind. Item number nine. This is a request to purchase, to authorize purchase of a Dell data domain DD6900 from the Information Systems Department to increase backup storage system capacity from budgeted funds.
Thank you. Yeah, this is, this correlates with the previous item and it is a storage platform or backup platform. They'll give us 60 byte terabytes of storage with the industry-leading compression and deduplication technology, allowing us to safely and secure our backup data as it continues to grow. Dell has provided this quote in the amount of $18,675.12 using the same state contract pricing as well as including the five-year warranty and installation. Take any questions?
Thank you, Councilmember O'Neil. Councilmember Toy?
Yeah, I would like to move an approving on that and thank you very, very much, Casey. He's really got a great job for all of us, as you've pointed out in the past, Madam President. He deserves most of everything he wants on his Santa wish list.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think you should have told him that probably last month before Santa came, but I love to try to remember that for the entire year. All right, Casey, did you hear that? Laura Toy has promised to be your Santa Claus this year. I want to think about that right now, but anyway.
Broke my list.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. With that, we go on to item number 10. This is a request to approve the establishment of improvement bonds. This comes to us from the Engineering Division to issue the installation of public improvements at Livonia Manor 3 Site condominium located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Canterbury Avenue and Shrewsbury Drive in the southeast quarter of Section 3. And this is Council Resolution 272-20. Mr. Zalinsik.
Good evening, Madam President and City Council Members. Happy New Year to you. Again, this, this is just a housekeeping issue. When we do a new development for condos, we want to make sure we take the bonds in case something happens, developer walks away. Obviously, there's only four homes here and this is, you know, in an effort to connect two dead ends and have a connection point. Obviously, to help out the water quality with the dead end water mains there. So we are appreciative of the development to help, again, have a continuous loop along Shrewsbury and Canterbury in this portion of area where the four houses we placed. Just looking for your approval so we can get, collect the bonds from the developer and appreciate your efforts. And obviously, want to protect the city in case something does happen, which anticipate it, but you never know. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. And by the way, I just want to say, I'm not sure if you are, but we're happy that you returned from Hawaii and then Florida. There was, there were some rumors that you weren't going to be back, but we're happy to see that the draw of the city and all of us is so strong that you decided not to stay in paradise. Anyway, Council. Oh, Councilmember White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Mr. Zalinsik, I can understand your reluctance to leave paradise. But yes, I would offer approving on consent if there's no objection, please.
Thank you.
All right. Approving on consent from Councilmember White. Any objections, any comments from the audience? Seeing none, we will go on to item number 11. This is a vacating request, also from the Engineering Division, to vacate a public utility easement within the 18th Street Development located at 39007 Mile Road and its parcel ID number 46-023-99-001-004.
As you know, the old A123 building at Seven Mile and 275 was obviously demolished. And Beaumont Hospital is placing a hospital there. And we wanted to make sure that we vacate the water main easement that was running through the property so they can relocate it properly. So looking for your assistance to send it to the Planning Commission so it can route through the process. Usually takes two to three months. And it should be, again, just housekeeping issue to make sure that we can vacate that proposed water main public easement that's going through the proposed building and reroute that. As you all know, the steel is up there. It's a four-floor building and going quite nicely. So we appreciate efforts in there and they're looking to start utilities here shortly. So another nice development in the city of Livonia. You know, took some time, but appreciate Beaumont's patience and looking forward to working with them on completing this project. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. Councilmember Toy?
I'd like to offer an approving and to say a belated Merry Christmas to Mr. Zalinsik.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy.
All right. Thank you. All right. No, I guess no Santa Claus for you.
Neither Santa.
All right. Moving along. Item number 12. This is a waiver petition that comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2020-11-02-10 submitted by LS Equity LLC, requesting to redevelop commercial shopping center shops of Livonia, including demolishing a portion of the existing building, constructing a full-service restaurant with drive-through facilities. And yes, you heard this correctly, Livonia, it will be a Chick-fil-A, constructing an addition and renovating the exterior facade of the existing building and constructing a multi-tenant retail building with drive-through facilities located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Haller Avenue and Middle Belt Road. And these are addresses 29250 through 29350 Plymouth Road in the southwest quarter of Section 35. Mr. Terramino.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and Happy New Year to everyone. This project involves the redevelopment of the shopping center located at the northeast corner of Plymouth and Middle Belt Roads. The site in question, which is highlighted on this aerial, is about seven and three-quarters acres in size. It has 480 feet of frontage on Middle Belt and 185 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road. The existing building on the property is about 85,000 square feet. The primary tenant today is Office Depot, Office Max. The site is zoned C2 general business. Located closer to the intersection of Middle Belt and Plymouth is a vacant commercial building that was built in 2003 as a Walgreens pharmacy and then lined immediately to the east of the Firestone Complete Auto Care Center. There are cross-access agreements that exist between these three properties. The site would be developed in three phases. Phase one involves demolishing portions of the existing building and constructing a new Chick-fil-A restaurant. Phase two would be the construction of a new multi-tenant retail building adjacent to Plymouth Road in an area that is currently used for off-street parking. And then phase three involves enlarging the existing building along the facade and other parking lot improvements. Space for the Chick-fil-A would be made possible by removing about 27,000 square feet at the west end of the existing shopping center building. The new restaurant, as you can see here, would have drive-through facilities and would be located in the northwest corner of the property. It would contain 124 interior seats plus 24 outdoor seats for a combined total of 148 customer seats. The building would be one-story in height with an overall floor area of about 5,000 square feet. The outdoor seating is shown on the south side or the front of the building, which faces Plymouth Road. The drive-through includes two lanes of traffic that would commence in the southeast corner and then loop around the back of the building to a pickup window that is on the west side. There's a menu and ordering area shown in the northeast corner just before the turn at the back of the building. The inside and outside lanes would each have the capacity to handle about 19 and 21 vehicles, respectively. There are overhead canopies shown at two locations along the drive-through. One is at the menu and ordering area. That's the one shown here. And then the other would be at the pickup window. Going back to the overall site plan, five existing driveways provide access to the site and all five would remain to serve the new development. Three of the approaches are on Middle Belt Road and two are on Plymouth Road. The two located on the former Walgreens property, one on Middle Belt and one on Plymouth, both provide access to this shopping center via the cross-access agreement. Each major thoroughfare has a primary driveway to the site. The one on Middle Belt is near the center of the site's frontage, adjacent to the proposed new retail building, or excuse me, just south of the Chick-fil-A restaurant that's shown here. And then the other approach on Plymouth Road is along the east side of the property, adjacent to the new retail building. None of these five existing approaches are signalized. The exterior of the Chick-fil-A restaurant would contain primarily brick. And as you can see from these color renderings, canopies are shown above the windows and the entrance areas. The height of the building is shown at about 20 feet, four and a half inches. Moving on to phase two, again, this involves the construction of a second multi-retail building, which as I identified on the plans as Retail 1. This new building would be located at the south end of the parking lot adjacent to Plymouth Road. It's between the Farming, the Firestone and the Walgreens buildings. This building too would be one-story in height with a gross floor area just under 9,000 square feet. As you can see, access would be provided via connections with the shopping center's existing driveways and parking aisles. The exterior bill of the building would consist of different shades of brick and the height of the building here would be about 19 feet to, to a total of 25 feet, nine inches. The west end cap or the westerly unit is shown as a future restaurant with drive-through facilities. The site plan shows a single drive-through lane along the north and west sides that would have the capacity to accommodate nine vehicles. And there is not a tenant identified for that restaurant at this time. Next is phase three, which involves a 5,400-square-foot addition in the northeast corner of the existing building. And with this expansion, the building would contain a gross floor area of about 63,000 square feet. Additionally, the entire storefront elevation would be renovated. The architecture and materials are intended to complement the design of retail building number one. The exterior finish would contain brick. And as you can see, there are new parapet wall sections that would vary in height and then project above the roof line. Parking is based on the total amount of retail space on the site. Per ordinance, this new development would require a total of 413 parking spaces. The site plan shows a total of 397 spaces. This results in a deficiency of 16 parking spaces, which is the equivalent of about 3.8% of the total number of required spaces and will require the approval of the zoning board of appeals. Fully detailed landscape plans have been included, showing new plant materials throughout the site, including around the buildings and within the parking lot islands. And I'll just show you briefly what those, some of the sections of those landscape areas look like. New dumpster enclosures are shown behind each of the buildings with eight-foot-high enclosure walls constructed out of brick. The plan also shows new parking lot lighting. For stormwater management, underground detention systems would be constructed in the parking lots. And at this time, we don't have information regarding signage. A detailed traffic study was conducted by the petitioner's consultant, Rowe Professional Services Company. And the findings of the report recommend several changes that are intended to improve delays and queue lengths experienced by motorists, motorists primarily on southbound Middle Belt. And the consultant is here this evening and can provide additional information regarding their findings. The Planning Commission is recommending approval. They have several recommendations and among them are a requirement to modify the landscape plan to include new plantings along Middle Belt. a requirement to modify the landscape plan to include new plantings along Middle Belt Road. Six weeks prior to the opening of the Chick-fil-A, the developer must submit to the Traffic Bureau a plan for managing both onsite and off-site traffic during the so-called honeymoon period. All traffic improvements as deemed necessary by both Wayne County and MDOT must be completed prior to the issuance of any certificates of occupancy, and then separate waiver use approval is required for any drive-up restaurant located in the smaller retail building adjacent to Plymouth Road. And with that, Madam President, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taramina. Council, I see Mr. Council, I see Councilmember Donavick first. Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President. I do apologize if I go in and out. The signal is a little spotty. But through the chair to Mr. Taramina, just a confirmation, the cross-access agreements, those are still in place even with the new ownership and the new potential development?
That is my understanding, and the developer can confirm that this evening for you.
Okay, and then do we have, I thought I had heard about the Walgreens. Is there an update? Is there going to be a tenant there, or you're not sure at this point?
Yes, we are working with a prospective tenant. It would be a medical use, and at this point, I can't really divulge the details of that, but yes, that is moving forward. So it does appear that we'll have that building occupied in the not-too-distant future.
Awesome. And then, in our prior discussion, there was some talk about updating the signal at the intersection. Has there been any update there about updating that signal at Middle Belt and Plymouth Road, or?
Yeah, I'm going to let Mr. Labade speak more directly to that. I was made aware today that documents have been submitted to MDOT for review. They do have those on file and are beginning that process. But no decisions have been made, no permits issued, and nothing like that at this point. They're still reviewing the findings of the TIS or the Traffic Impact Study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taramina, and just one last question slash comment. I am very much in favor for this project. I live right down the street. This is an area that needs help. It's been vacant for many years now. So to see a large company like Chick-fil-A that is very well nationally known choose Livonia to come here, the very detailed plans by Mr. Jarboe and his team, very excited about this property, were taken in very old dilapidated building and bringing it back to life. So I want to see this forward. My only concern really is, of course, traffic, and that is just something that comes with something of this nature. But at the same time, we are bringing this corner really back to life, and these are just one of the things that we're going to have to deal with. But that doesn't mean that we can't take the proper precautions to make sure that we can make traffic a little bit more bearable in that area. With that being said, I know looking at the plans, there's still shows turning left out of Middle Belt. I do not see how that is going to work. I use Middle Belt and Plymouth Road every single day, and you are not going to be able to turn left out of this parking lot onto Middle Belt Road to go south on Middle Belt towards Plymouth Road. It's just not going to happen. That middle lane extends down past the factory on Middle Belt Road in the middle of rush hour traffic. So I want to see that addressed, but I look forward to the traffic study information. Thank you, Mr. Taramina, and to Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. Councilmember White.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Taramina, but I do want to comment that I share Councilmember Donavick's concern about turning left to go onto Middle Belt South. With respect to the TIS, the Traffic Impact Study, other than the requirement for approvals from the county, Mark, how does this plan incorporate all the other recommendations from that Traffic Impact Study? Do you know?
Well, the detail on the plan, to the extent that the traffic analysis is embedded in the proposal, then yes, but the plans themselves don't identify the specific improvements that are recommended out of the traffic analysis. It's really the resolution that of the Planning Commission that speaks to that, and we would anticipate that council would want to carry that over. There's a number of recommendations dealing with things like the right turn phases, the signal optimization. Couple of the recommendations, like widening the driveways, that is, those are shown on the plan, but some of the other items really are not, cannot appropriately be shown on the plan. And again, they're all subject to MDOT and Wayne County review and approval, which this, with the, which the Planning Commission resolution references.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Taramina. I guess, before I kind of generalize some of the some of the notes I had from reviewing the packet, the one question I did have, I obviously have Office Depot in the space right now. Does that, does that go away?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I broke up.
In the current, obviously, in the current, in that corner in the retail, I think Office Depot is the only thing that's kind of up and running right now. Is Office Depot obviously not going to be continuing?
Yeah, that same question was asked by the Planning Commission, and I believe the developer's response was they're there right now for the short term. What happens in the future is unknown. It's hope that they'll stay with this redevelopment, but again, he might be able to update you on that and provide additional information.
All right, thank you. Just some general notes. Obviously, that corner, I grew up probably a half-mile away and would walk to Wonderland Mall almost every single day, and I remember actually buying my homecoming suit from the thrift store that used to be on that corner that's been vacant for probably twenty-two years. Right now, Office Depot is pretty much the only thing there. So obviously, a development like this will obviously impact and revitalize. A lot of the, you know, the questions that I've been receiving and even looking at myself as the traffic, and I think with any kind of development, especially along the lines of the Chick-fil-A, traffic definitely comes into play. Having seen the stacking plan, even for, as you said, seeing the honeymoon period, I think that's wise. That was one of the biggest things that I was looking at, is how are you going to kind of funnel everybody through if you've got a forty-five-minute wait? I know the one in Novi opened up, and, you know, I think still has a half-hour wait, but, you know, I think after a good month or two, you kind of get that somewhat under control. And this corner, obviously, is one of the busier ones in our city. Looking at the Traffic Impact Study that is obviously being presented, two of the notes I kind of wanted to at least, you know, say on council right now is the planning report number nine, no less than six weeks before opening, the petitioner shall submit a traffic control plan to the Traffic Bureau for approval. So that is in, you know, that's in this packet. Number ten, all traffic improvements shall be completed prior to the CMO, and then I think there was probably close to a two-hundred-page study of traffic counts that were provided in the packet. So I definitely think the due diligence was there. Will there be some quirks that need to be, you know, shored up after this goes into play? Absolutely. But as for the overall development to the city and revitalizing that corner, I think it's a, I think it's a home run. And I don't think there's any motion right now. I'd be happy to offer an approving for regular if I may.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Anyone else? If not, I have, I have just a few comments and questions. One is, Mark, could you put the Chick-fil-A schematic back up, please? So where there's, can you just, Mark, can you indicate where the points of egress and ingress are from the, from the street or from the surrounding plaza into Chick-fil-A, into the Chick-fil-A loop?
Yeah, the primary circulation pattern, we believe, will be coming in either from Middle Belt Road or from Plymouth Road, and then entering the drive-through lane here, going around the building to the pickup area, and then exiting the site. Probably the most direct route, obviously, is to Middle Belt Road, as Councilman Donavick indicated. You know, the left turn movements here obviously will be very difficult during the AM and the PM hours. The other option would be to circle back out onto Plymouth Road using either of these two driveways. But, but to answer your question, this president, it's really in this fashion right here around the Chick-fil-A, back out to Middle Belt Road, we believe.
Oh, Mark, would you show me again? Just use that little hand icon. So if I'm, if I'm heading, you know, north or south on Middle Belt, right, where is it exactly that I'm entering? Would you show me where I enter, where exactly that drive is, and then how I, how I get into the Chick-fil-A drive-through? Explain why I'm asking this.
So, so if you're coming on Middle Belt Road, you'll have two options to enter the site if you're coming from the south. The first is what is referred to as the south driveway on Middle Belt. The second is referred to as the middle driveway on Middle Belt Road. Either one of those will enable you to navigate to the entrance to the, to the drive-up facility, which is here on the, in the southeast corner of the restaurant, and then you would loop around as you order and obtain your items, and then exit out the same way, back out to Middle Belt Road using the Middle Belt driveway or the middle driveway, or maybe even continuing further, further south, either to Middle Belt Road or back to Plymouth Road. So you'll have different options for both entering and exiting the site. The most obvious one, as I see this, is really the two main driveways, the middle driveway here on Middle Belt Road and then the east driveway here on Plymouth Road.
So the reason I ask is the way this is laid out, as opposed to the Panera at six and Two-seventy-five, there's not a pinch point here of getting, of entering the Chick-fil-A lot like there is at that Panera. The way that, the way that that curb cut or whatever, it's not really a curb cut, but if you're coming in to the, you know, if you're entering into the Panera, forget about whether you drive through or whatever, because it's a, you know, it's like a separate parking lot, the way that, that way that drive is, it is impossible for one car to be coming out as one car is coming in. And I just want to make sure that when we look at this, and that's why I was trying to make sure I understood this, that we don't create that same situation. I mean, it's difficult at Panera during busy times, and they're likely not as busy as Chick-fil-A. They're not set up, you know, they're not a volume business like Chick-fil-A is.
Yeah, and I think, in the traffic study speaks to this, and that is the, as the vehicles queue here to exit the site, there will be delays, and it will cause some backups along this primary driveway. But in terms of what you referred to as that pinch point, that won't exist, at least not as far as entering the drive-up facility. I'll also mention that there is a drive aisle that is immediately adjacent. So what you have here is actually three lanes. You have the two drive-up lanes and then the open drive aisle that would provide unobstructed access completely around the building for vehicles that either want to, for patrons who either want to park and enter and dine inside, or who just want to avoid it altogether and just keep on going and exit the site. So it does provide a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree bypass, if you will.
And this is, and I think the other difference is that this is not a, there aren't physical barriers between this lot, or it's not, there are no physical enclosures that separate this lot, correct, from the other, from the other business lots in this area?
No, everything is connected via drive aisles and the...
Unlike Panera, where you actually have a physical, right, you have curbs, you know, you have barriers, right, to the parking lot, and that's what creates the, that's what creates the pinch point. Second question, there is no ring road or connected road where you can access a left-hand turn signal returning to either Middle Belt or Plymouth Road. Is that correct? Did I hear that and understand this correctly?
None of these, none of these driveways are signalized. That's correct. The only signal is here at Middle Belt and Plymouth Road, and then a little further north entering the Ford plant.
I mean, I love this, but I think we are, I think we are setting ourselves up for, and let's, let's put the honeymoon periods separate. I think we're setting ourselves up for traffic catastrophe here, because, I mean, we, I witness, and I'll use the Eight Mile or the Hagerty Road Target as an example, and now there is a second light. But there's a light, right? There's that connected road that now goes between the new Panera and the Target driveway. There's always been a light there, and even in non-busy times, right, people don't want to use the light, and they go out at one of the other entrance, you know, ingress, egress driveways to Hagerty Road to make a left-hand turn because they think it's going to be faster than, than waiting for the light, and it is. It takes a long time at that light, and, you know, I don't know how many actual crashes happen there, but I just witnessed time after time near misses, right, and it's the opposite of defensive driving. And I really feel that we are just setting people up to make really poor decisions about trying to get out when you, that when, you know, there's times of day, it's going to be impossible to make a left-hand turn. And then my other, my other concern is on the Middle Belt Road, there's a, there's a left-hand turn lane, correct, where the, where the entrance is, where the Middle Belt Road, the, what are we calling that? The north driveway, right?
The middle driveway or north driveway. Yeah, no, there is a left-turn lane that extends along Middle Belt Road across Front and Sheraton.
And what other, where are other, where the dotted line is across, because that's where the Ford plant is, right? Are people, so where, where's the entrance to the Ford plant? Because what, the other thing that I see as a potential problem is that, that left-hand turn lane to get into Panera, get into Chick-fil-A is going to be just backed up, right? So then what if you have the situation, if you have cars going north on Middle Belt Road, are they going to be trying? Is that a, is that a driveway to the Ford plant, just?
Yeah, so, so there is a driveway located here. However, this is not the primary driveway. The signalized driveway is further to the north. It does not show on this aerial photograph. So there's a secondary means to access the Ford property further to the north, which, and as it, as it exists today, this may back up almost to this point. So that, that conflict may actually exist at certain times of the day presently with this driveway going into the Ford plant.
And then, I was just saying, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, there's no question. There will be times of the day when turning left out of this driveway will not be possible. Now, the consultant will tell you that with the planned improvements, it's intended to improve the level of service along Middle Belt Road and provide the gaps that would allow left-turn movements. But I suspect with the heavy use and everything, it's turning left out of there during, at certain times of the day is, is just going to be very difficult, if not impossible.
And people will do it, but they will do it, right? I mean, we, and it is the absolute opposite of defensive driving, because they get frustrated, and they, and then they have horn honking behind them because the people behind them think there was sufficient time to go, and then they rely on somebody, you know, either heading northbound or southbound to stop, right, and let them out. And then I see the same problem with the left-hand turn lane on Plymouth Road, right, that you're going to have cars queued up heading east on Plymouth Road trying to get into that driveway, and there you've got the left-hand turn lane. And there you've got the left-hand turn lane and, and you've got other driveways across from it. I mean, I love this location. I love the business. I love the redevelopment of this plaza where it is. I love everything about it. But I can't, I, I can't feel good about this until we have a traffic solution. So, that's, and one other, just one other comment, Mark. Um, and, and I don't know what our ability is to do this, but during the honeymoon period, we're really going to need supplemental traffic patrols and enforcements there. Can that, can that be the responsibility of Chick-fil-A to pay for that?
Yeah, that was the reason why the, uh, the plan would have to be submitted, uh, to the Traffic Safety Bureau for their review and approval, uh, prior to opening, uh, so that all of those, um, um, are, are, are put into place, uh, at the time of the, uh, the store opening, uh, to, to address both onsite and offsite, uh, traffic circulation.
Okay. And, and Chick-fil-A will, will pay for whatever's needed?
Uh, that's the intent, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mark, and, uh, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Toy and then Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I have, uh, some of those same concerns. If, Mark, if I may ask you to go back to the other site plan where the new, um, buildings are, if you could. Mark, um, as, as you come, let's see, that would be north behind the phase one piece, uh, that very far drive, I think that exists right now on the old building. Uh, why is there rationale for not making that, um, an ingress or even an egress at that point? Point being, um, I attended it and I welcomed them as, as Council President said, you know, this is an exciting adventure. It's a great economic, uh, venture there as well. But I've sat at least twenty-five minutes to try the new one in Novi and it continues to be very busy and I applaud them for that, but, um, no offense, some of my order never got, um, part of it, of two other people that were in the car. There was no way to go back and retrieve what I had paid for. Um, and, and furthermore, um, when you get frustrated, as was said, I'm glad to hear those other lanes that I could circle around, but I also want a way I can escape. And I don't want to have to come through phase three if that one center unit off of Middle Belt is so backed up with the cars coming out. I'm concerned about the traffic flow, I guess, uh, without, you know, I, I, I think it's a wonderful project. I kind of, you know, I think it was Lazy Boy, I think is over in Novi or some of those smaller retail stores, they're being very impacted by that. And it's not that they're maybe increasing sales so much, it's just the traffic flow is such that it's hard to get in and out of their retail stores. So I was a little taken aback when I saw the site plan with the retailers where they're at, which is wonderful, except the configuration of how, the frustration, if you will, with the success of a Chick-fil-A comes that traffic. And that's only natural, as you said. And I think they're trying to do a whole lot of things, like you put it on your phone ahead of time or whatever, but there's always a few issues arise, like I said, when they forgot half my order. And, um, you know, I, I had no way of going back and, um, because it was too packed and there was just no way. And, and I'm talking about the Novi store. And, you know, I'm sure they've done and approved a whole lot since then, don't get me wrong. But that's just one example of a concern. And that's why I wondered why there wasn't another driveway in the back there. You know what I'm saying, Mark? Kind of to the north there is a face as Middle Belt?
Well, there are three. So you've got one here, one here, and then there is a third one further to the north.
Oh, good. That's great to hear. Well, I really appreciate that. I'll look forward to speaking with the petitioner as well, Madam President, when he comes forward or she does. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. For Mr. Tormenta for the chair, uh, I was looking through the packet and it was pretty lengthy. Is there hours of operation already established for this, uh, Chick-fil-A?
That, that's a, uh, question really for the, um, uh, for the representative from Chick-fil-A who I believe is on tonight's, uh, call.
Okay. Um, and, uh, I would just like to make a point.
For now.
Okay, I would just like to make a point that with the other Chick-fil-A's, um, it's just my opinion, I, I think there's a lot of transient traffic because there's so few and it's such a popular brand. I am hoping that, um, as these continue to pop up, I think, you know, prior discussion, there may be one coming to Canton. So maybe as these become more normal, they may not be as busy, but I don't honestly think as I'm talking out loud, I, I don't think that the timing of this, I, I think this location is going to be rather busy regardless. Um, but, um, I guess one of my big dick point of clarification I wanted to make or a question rather, for Mr. McCullough's motion, um, and I don't want to add anything to his motion, is there a way that a motion would reflect, would this be the appropriate time to reflect in a motion? No turning left out of Middle Belt? Or is that, uh, a discussion that takes place later throughout this process? Mr. Tormenta?
Um, you know, really, that's, that's up to council. You, you could have a resolution as, uh, provided by Planning Commission. You could have a second resolution for consideration, uh, that would add, um, conditions, including the one you just mentioned. So, um, it's, it's really up to you how you, how you want to, uh, uh, position that for, uh, for next, for next week's, uh, vote, voting meeting.
With that being said, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to confuse this. Again, driving up and down Middle Belt every single day, uh, you will not be able to turn left out of a Chick-fil-A with the left-hand traffic, uh, that is going southbound to turn east onto Plymouth Road. Um, so with that being said, uh, unless, uh, my colleague, Mr. McCullough would like to add that to his motion, then I, I won't add a motion. And I may not be doing this correctly, this is my first time, but I'd like to add an additional motion to, uh, to accept this for the next regular meeting with no turning left out of the two entrances on Middle Belt Road. And if I did that incorrectly, Mr. Jolly, I know you could probably help me out here.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Jolly, would you like to address that?
I just, I want to tell Mr. Donovan he did a very, very good job. Well done.
Thank you. So, yeah, that, that's, that, that's fine. Councilmember Toy?
Did, did McCullough accept it? If not, he can do a separate motion, right, um, to the Palmetto area?
I thought that, did I, did I not hear that correctly? I thought that Mr. Donovan was, this is a separate motion.
Oh, I thought you wanted to tag on before.
Left, left, uh, left turn.
That's correct. It would be a separate resolution with the.
Yeah, we have a, we have a separate resolution.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Donovan.
Again, I do apologize if I'm complicating this. Uh, if Mr. McCullough does like that idea, he can amend his motion, uh, and I will rescind my motion. If not, then that was, that was the resolution I would like to present.
Madam President, I have, uh, I, 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 I can, we can include that. I can amend mine to include the, uh, verbiage that Mr. Donovan just presented.
All right. So, uh, Councilmember McCullough has amended his resolution to include, um, approval with the left turn restrictions. Is that correct?
That's correct, Madam President.
Yeah, Madam President, I think it's easier if we just have a resolution, A, um, approving as recommended by the Planning Commission, and then a resolution, B, uh, recommending this with the Planning Commission with the additional, uh, prohibition. So you could choose either A or B at the time.
I, I think that, I, I think that, that's a, I think that's the right approach.
Yes.
All right. So, uh, did everyone get that? So we, we will have, that's all right with everyone. We will have resolution A, accepting the Planning Commission as presented, resolution B, accepting the Planning Commission as, uh, presented with the addition of the prohibition of the left-hand turn or the left turn onto Middle Belt from the, from the restaurant.
Are they both made by Councilmember McCullough? Or is one by Councilmember Donovan and one by Councilmember McCullough?
No, one's, but it's by Councilmember. I think both by Count, I.
I can say it does not matter. I think we, I think we've covered what we need to.
But it, but it matters, but it does matter for, so we can type it up correctly.
Um, I will defer this to, uh, Councilmember Donovan.
Well, well, just a minute. I mean, the, the issue is, then you offered, uh, then you offered amended resolution and then Donovan said that he rescinded his. So what we have now is one resolution offered with the prohibitions. Um, either one of you could offer, but Mark, I'm sorry.
We'll just do resolution A from McCullough, uh, per Planning Commission, resolution B from Donovan with the, uh, with the additional.
That's what I was going to suggest. All right? So everybody's good with that? Okay. Um, if there's, uh, if council doesn't have anything additional, I will ask, I will ask one other thing or just say one other thing. I am not as concerned about the left-hand turn from Plymouth, but I, I see that as, uh, close to just as bad. So, like, um, at this time, uh, Councilmember Donovan?
Uh, yes, uh, thanks, Madam President. Currently, you cannot turn left in the first, uh, entrance, closest to Middle Belt, where, which would be considered maybe the Walgreen, uh, lot. I do believe you are allowed to make a left-hand turn traveling eastbound into the auto shop, the tire shop right there.
Okay. Which is, which is quite a bit further from the, uh, from the intersection. All right. Thank you, uh, and I couldn't remember. I don't, I'm not often at that plaza now. So thank you. All right. At this time, I believe we will go to the petitioner. Let's see, who I just, oh, where did the petitioner go? There we go. Uh, Mr. Frank, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly. I'll ask you to correct me if I'm not. Uh, Mr. Jarboe. Let's see, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Again, okay. Thank you. Good evening. Happy New Year, everyone. Um, glad to be here, glad to see everyone. Um, just wanting to, first of all, give a brief overlay. I want to introduce my team. Uh, we have Justin Lurk from Chick-fil-A.
Could you, are you able to first introduce yourself, please, with your.
Sorry.
That's okay.
My name, my name is Frank Jarboe from Symmetry Management. Uh, we're the developers for the site. Uh, address is four one nine eight Orchard Lake Road, Suite 250 Orchard Lake, Michigan. Um, we do also have with us Justin Lurk from Chick-fil-A, Michael Lapperty from Row, um, Engineering, and Mike McPherson from Atwell, which is our civil engineer, and Jenny Neal, which is our project manager on the job from Symmetry Management. Um, you know, we, we appreciate everything, uh, that, that concerns. I want to address a couple of quick questions that, uh, Councilman Donovan had about the cross-access. Uh, you asked about having the cross-access and do they remain? They do remain. They run, uh, for, uh, they run with the property. Um, the only way that we could change that is if we came to an agreement with the adjacent parcels, which we don't plan on doing any of that. Um, everybody likes the access as the way they are, um, and it helps, uh, everybody out. Um, Councilman McCullough, you asked a question about, uh, Office Depot. Um, we are working with them currently to see if they were willing to stay or they won't, you know, um, they have their own internal problems, so trying to work through those as well and getting that done. Um, you know, we've put a lot of time and effort into this, uh, development. We've put together, I think assembled a very good team to give all you, give, uh, all the council members a good background and knowledge of, you know, this, this was, uh, a, a lot of phase of planning. Um, it was months of planning, months of, uh, you know, getting into the weeds of, you know, traffic and traffic studies and understanding what's going to really happen here before we put our, you know, our best foot forward with, uh, with the Planning Commission. Um, we did find some irregularities in the lights at Middle Belt and Plymouth. One was that when we talked to M.D., they said that those lights, and, 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 um, I'll let Mi- Michael Lapperty speak to this too as well, he's the expert on it. But, you know, those light and the interchanges have not been adjusted since, uh, ninety-six was constructed, uh, meaning the, uh, the redevelopment of it. So there are some adjustments, immediate adjustments that can be made there, um, that we plan on working with them to help deviate and work through that traffic that's, that's at that intersection. So I know it's, uh, an issue right now and, and with Chick-fil-A feeling it might become a bigger issue, but I think we've got, you know, um, a, a hold of how we can adjust the timing of the lights at Middle Belt and Plymouth and with even the light at the Ford, uh, entrance that's a little bit further north. Um, during the honeymoon period and, you know, um, Justin Lurk can, uh, um, talk about this too as well, um, one thing that you're seeing in Novi right now, which, which is, doesn't help us is there is no indoor dining. So, um, fifty-two percent, I, I can't get, I can't remember if that, it's fifty-two percent or forty-eight percent, uh, dine in, um, at a, at a, at a regular Chick-fil-A. So that's, that's pretty, that's, I mean, obviously half of it. And if you look at the Novi site, I remember when it was the Denny's over there, it was, it was hard to get into the Denny's when it was the Denny's and the Denny's was only popular at two in the morning, so at that time. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit, uh, difficult to get in there. Um, they're stacking some cars i- i- on the parking lot i- i- in the back over there, um, and they're working through that. Um, I've been in three Chick-fil-A's across the country in two different states and, um, and much, some, and from what I've heard, some of their store sales are far exceeding the Michigan store sales and they do a phenomenal job. I really have to say, really give it to them. They're not a typical, um, you know, quick service restaurant. They, they put a lot of effort into each individual store. And as we were discussing with the Planning Commission, um, each individual store has a franchise owner-operator and that is his primary business. So he's, it's not, you know, Frank Jarboe that, you know, that's an electrician, then tomorrow he's of, you know, he's a Chick-fil-A operator. He's a Chick-fil-A operator from day one and he's, you know, boots on the ground every single day, you know, and working with his team. Um, you know, Chick-fil-A corporate does offer to come in and, uh, help the, the operator and get him going through the honeymoon period, um, and, and working through all of those, uh, um, uh, you know, who was in the M.I.B. But I think, uh, you know, they've done a phenomenal job. I've been in, you know, where situations, unfortunately, uh, Councilmember Toy, I, I'm sorry, they messed up your order, um, and, you know, we will, we will make that up to you, I promise, um, at this site. Um, and, you know, it's going to happen. Uh, it's going to happen everywhere, whether it be, uh, this Chick-fil-A, other Chick-fil-A's, or it's going to be, you know, um, you know, other, other restaurants. Um, I can, you know, we've done developments on Ford Road in Canton Township and, um, you know, those developments are, you know, I mean, you guys know Ford Road and how busy that is and making a left into there. Um, i- i- you know, you could never find the perfect site. It could never be a perfect scenario. Um, please, if you do, let me know. I would love to have that site. Um, you know, but there, it, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. And one thing that you're going to find with Chick-fil-A and the amount of effort, the amount of, uh, time they put in this, um, into this, uh, in working with us hand in hand to make sure they have a successful opening, i- i- it's tremendous, i- i- it's pretty big. And, you know, for the honeymoon period, which normally lasts three to six weeks, we plan on closing that one entrance on Middle Belt, um, and working through the traffic then and, uh, having Chick-fil-A's team work through the traffic. Um, and, you know, um, adjusting where they need to go, how to get in and out of the site. Um, I can tell you, I've looked at a lot of Chick-fil-A sites. This is probably, and Mr. Lurk can tell you as well, has done more than I have. Um, this is the only seven-acre site probably ever in their portfolio where they're able to stack cars onsite and work them through the drive-through and get them in and out. Um, I have been through the Novi one myself a couple of times with my two screaming sons in the back and my wife driving and thank God she's not up here, but she doesn't drive very well. So I've tested her through that and, um, she's done very well, actually. Um, and they've done very well and they've gone through, um, the order process, um, and we were, you know, I, I pulled into the line, I said, I'm not waiting in this thing and lo and behold, we were in and out and, and did very well. So, um, we, we are here to work with the community. We are, um, this, this, uh, I can, you know, I just, I don't want to focus just on the Chick-fil-A. I also want to focus on the rest of the development because there is the rest of the development. Um, we, we were chasing this property for about two to two and a half years from the out-of-state owner that had, had it for about eight or nine years and was. for about two to two and a half years from the out-of-state owner that had, had it for about eight or nine years and was reluctant to sell. He left it dilapidated the way it was, didn't put any money into it. Um, we jumped on a plane, went to New York, purchased it from him, came back and we knew that we had a gem here. We just had to polish it up. So our plan, even though it is a phasing plan, um, we plan on, you know, at first, obviously the Chick-fil-A. But, you know, we hopefully are working with a couple of other tenants that we could put in the big box space in the back and completely renovating that building. I mean, you, we're probably going to, uh, uh, break it down to the steel structure, brand-new facade, brand-new side, uh, front, back and brand-new roof. Um, we do have a couple of different, uh, tenants that might be looking to go up front. It could be a couple of tenants like, like we proposed in that multi-tenant, uh, use there. Um, but we're also very conscious in all of our developments that we don't necessarily, we're not going to put two Chick-fil-A's on one site. So when you see a real restaurant drive-through on that site that's facing Plymouth, it, it'd be, we want to, we want to complement the rest of the uses there. It could be a soft, good user. It could be, everybody wants a drive-through these days. It could be a Little Caesar's, a Jimmy John's, something that's not going to be so heavily, first of all, park-intensive. Second of all, drive more tre- tremendous traffic to the site, but, you know, something that's, you know, easily, easily done for the site. And that's what we do across all of our developments where we do them. So, you know, you know, we plan on, we hope to do this all at once, even though it is, does have a phasing plan, but talking about brand-new parking lot, brand-new LED lighting in the parking lot, uh, light poles, new landscape islands and a, obviously, like I said, a complete renovation of that back building. So, um, we knew this was a gem when we found it and we wanted to polish it up. And I think that I, all of you, uh, share the same thoughts I do. Um, we are here to work with you and my team is here to answer, me and my team are here to answer. Any questions or concerns you may have?
Uh, Mr. Jarboe, before I go to the rest of council, just like to make a few comments. One is, we very much appreciate the time and effort that you've put in. We're well aware of that. We are very appreciative of anyone who comes to our city and works to develop um, a site like this that very much needs redevelopment. You know, as far as your comment about us finding you a perfect space, we, we all work and live in an infilled city. So we're very, very aware that perfect sites don't exist in Livonia. You know, we have very few greenfield sites. The other thing that, that I, I didn't think I heard correctly, and I'm sure you maybe meant it in jest, was that your wife's not a good driver. Um, I, I'm not sure what that has to do with anything, but I, you know, I, I, and, and maybe it was a sincere comment, but I don't, uh, I, I just didn't appreciate that. It didn't hit me the right way, but we're not here to talk about what hits me the right way and the wrong way. And one other thing about the, the other restaurant you're planning, your point is very well taken, that you're not going to look for something that has the same level of intensity, uh, intensity of use as Chick-fil-A. And that, that to me doesn't even come into this equation because that's going to be, and I believe, Mark, because it's new, it'll be another site plan approval. So we're not, by approving this, we're not granting approval for whatever's going to come down at the other end, correct?
Yes, that will require a separate, uh, application.
Right. So I'm not even going there yet. And, and my concerns, you know, have, I, I know very well how Chick-fil-A operates. I, I know that it's an owner-operator model. I, I know that the reason we're all concerned about this is because it is such a high-quality desirable product. And, you know, my concerns all get to the traffic and, and that's, you know, I, I know you have an excellent reputation as a developer. I, you know, uh, th- this is a great project and I have great enthusiasm for it. It, it just comes down to being very, very concerned about the traffic. So with that, I'm going to go to the rest of council. Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. I just got a couple of questions, uh, through the chair to the petitioner.
Please.
If this does, uh, you know, pass and gets approved, do you have an ETA on, uh, when you'd like to be potentially, uh, opening?
I- if it does get approved, which we hope it does, um, we would probably go, obviously go through the engineering department. We would have obviously building department getting our permits. We would hope to start construction in sometime, maybe late spring, early summer, and hopefully have Chick-fil-A open, uh, come late fall, uh, maybe, uh, uh, winter time. Um, and I ca- I could, I do want to add that, you know, Hagerty location in Northville will, is already open in January. Um, they do, are looking at a, another site in Canton. So we hope by that time that, um, it, you know, pulls, uh, more traffic towards those other stores and as they continue to infill stores around the state, but that will help as well too. And hopefully COVID is lifted at that point and we can all sit down and have a chicken sandwich together.
No, thank you. And then do you think that now Canton, is Canton loca- I know Northville Township, I think that's, the, the things that I've heard was that was going to open up probably within the next two weeks. Uh, the Canton location, do you foresee that location being under construction prior to this if it's approved?
I, I, that is not my deal. Unfortunately, well, we weren't a part of that and, uh, I'll let Justin speak to that, but I think they're still going through their planning stages right now. I don't necessarily think that they're going to be, uh, it ca- it could be, it depends how fa- how fast, where they're at with the process. It could be simultaneously being opened. Um, um, I just, I, I don't know about that one.
Thank you. And then just the last statement I have is, you know, I, I was very, I want to thank you guys for including that stacking thing. You did make a mention of it, that, you know, the seven-acre property. Yeah, the, that is, that is huge, at least through the honeymoon period. At, at least to try to stack as enough cars to, to get that operation rolling. So thank you for including that in the package. That's all I have.
So that, thank you very much.
Uh, Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, uh, for Mr. Jarboe, uh, first, thanks for such a, uh, very detailed and comprehensive plan. Uh, I'm really excited about it. Uh, thank you for answering my questions. It means a lot. Um, in terms of, and this may be for Justin, uh, from Chick-fil-A. I remember you guys had spoken about the first entrance or the, the middle entrance potentially blocking that off during the honeymoon phase to maybe control traffic for the drive-through. And I apologize if I had missed that question earlier because I lost internet, hadn't logged back in. Is that still something that you guys are considering doing or?
We plan on doing that during the honeymoon period. We'll close that off and, uh, uh, adjust traffic to exit, uh, from a different, uh, area. So they're, they're not making a left or a right out of that immediate, or it doesn't back up.
Gotcha. Okay. And, uh, also you made a good comment. Uh, when we think about, think, moving forward, I know this is right here in the moment, we're thinking about it. But, uh, a year from now, maybe is when the, um, Chick-fil-A will open. And I assume that we are at a different point in, in the world where we can be eating inside and, uh, with other Chick-fil-A's opening, hopefully that can remediate some stress. So that's all the questions I have. Uh, thank you again, Mr. Jarboe, for your professionalism and your very detailed plan. And I look forward to this, uh, coming to Livonia. Thank you, sir.
Um, Councilmember Toy, before we go to you, would you be okay if, if I went to, uh, Mr. Lurk, who I believe is the traffic consultant, unless you have something you want to say before we go to the traffic consultant, please? You're muted.
Sorry, sorry. No, I just want to ask Mr. Jabar a question or two, but I can wait.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm positive. Sure.
All right. At this time, I'd, I'd like to recognize Mr. Justin Lurk, who is the, um, who is, I believe, the traffic consultant.
Um, actually, this is, this is Justin Lurk. I'm with Chick-fil-A.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, address is fifty-two hundred Buffington Road in Atlanta, Georgia. Uh, appreciate you all letting us come here and, and steal some time, uh, from you and your families, uh, this evening. So, uh, we're excited about this project as well. And I think Mr. Jarboe and team have, have, have created a great development here. We're going to be excited to be part of this development. I wanted to hit on a few questions that were, uh, that were asked as well. Mr. Donovan asked about hours of operation. Um, this store would, would follow our, our pretty typical hours of operation, which is typically six-thirty AM to ten PM, and that is Monday through Saturday. Uh, closed on, on Sundays. Our, our founder, Trucah Cathy, uh, grew up in, uh, restaurants and a diner and he felt it was important to allow his, his staff to have a day off and, and rest and, um, you know, be fit, thankful for what they had. So we're carrying on that tradition. Um, and then there were, um, there was another question from Commissioner, uh, McCullough about Canton. Uh, that's, that's at the early stages and, and no specific timeframes right now. I will say this project is, is further along, uh, than, than that one. Uh, if that, if that helps you get a, get a little idea. But as Mr. Jarboe stated, you know, we understand the traffic concerns. Um, we get that. Um, fortunately, we've been blessed with, with, uh, a great following and a good business. And I think that, I know that has to do with our operator model. Um, the, the single, single unit operator model. So if, if you become a franchisee owner-operator, that's your one location. That's your sole source of income. So you're going to do what you can to make sure the residents in the community, uh, feel welcomed and, um, you know, have a good experience. And, and first and foremost, uh, Ms. Ms. Toy, I, I know you didn't bring this up to, to get any, uh, any relief, but I want to personally apologize for, for your experience at Novi and I, I would love to, uh, uh, like to, like to make that up for you. Uh, that, that's what we're, we're known for. Again, I know that's not why you brought it up. You just brought it up as an example, but I want to, I want to make a hole there, okay?
That's okay. Get all these guys jealous now.
Yeah. But, but we're, we're, we're aware of the traffic situation and, and I think, um, Commissioner Donovan had, had brought it up that there's a lot of transient traffic, right? Because we have only a few locations to where you can, you can obtain our product right now. Somerset Mall, which has been there for a while, and only two freestanding locations, one in Allen Park, which is about fourteen miles away from here. And then the one in Novi that you had referenced as well, another fourteen miles away in, in an opposite direction. Um, and then, uh, as mentioned, Northville is opening in two weeks on the twenty-eighth. So that will relieve some pressure from, from Novi, um, Twelve Oaks Mall. And then, um, we've got Shelby Township, which is quite a bit further away, over, over thirty miles away. Um, but that'll also service the, uh, the northeast, um, Detroit metro area. So again, uh, I think you hit it on the nose that, uh, the more locations we open, the more choices consumers have to obtain our product. The less traffic you'll see at all of the locations. Um, we're certainly blessed with the response we have from, from everyone in, in the area. And Mr. Jarboe hit on it, uh, perfectly that if, you know, this is what I do on a daily basis, is a development and construction for Chick-fil-A. And if I had the opportunity to, uh, open a store that, that could span over a seven-acre parcel, um, my job would be a lot easier. So, um, I think, I think this, this is a very unique situation for us here. And we appreciate the fact that there is a phasing plan. Chick-fil-A is in the phase one of the plan, which allows us to utilize, and he's graciously offered us to utilize that parking field for queuing, um, you know, queuing up traffic to go, uh, to, to access our, our store. So, um, those were just, I think, a few of the questions that I heard that maybe weren't answered and I wanted to, to get those out.
Thank you, Mr. Lurk. Thank you very much. Um, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. If I may, maybe my question really needs to go to him. Um, thank you very much for everything. I didn't mean to bring that up, except as it related to the traffic.
Sure.
Get out and go back. That's, that's the reason I brought it up, not for any other reason. And it was a wonderful product, don't get me wrong. Uh, but I do have to ask you, you know, with such a success with all these stores, what have you found will help you the most in, I mean, good employees, obviously, but I mean, getting that traffic through, getting them served quicker. Uh, the phone we found to be very helpful, that we ordered off our phone. You know what I mean?
Yes.
And you got that and that moved us along, I think, a little bit faster in Novi. Like you said, it's an awkward spot in there. It really was. But, um, I appreciate, you know, you looking at your logistics of, you know, Ohio, you know, Michigan State teaches these courses. Um, I went to U of M, but I'm, you know, I'll promote them a little bit here, but, sorry, uh, President, uh, but, uh, I just joke around. But honestly, um, is there any other things you're doing to kind of speed along that traffic a little bit? I know you can only go so quick, but you know what I'm saying?
Sure. So what you, what you see in this location that you don't see in Novi, um, and, and this is a learning from, from COVID. So we've implemented it in this design, um, is a, is a double drive-through lane all the way around the building, right? So what we're trying to do there is get your orders earlier to give the kitchen more time to prepare the food. So when you get to the pickup window, all you have to do is pick up food and go after you're greeted with a warm, you know, a warm smile and a warm meal, right? Um, so, so having the two lanes all the way around, getting the order earlier, so the kitchen has time to prepare it. And the, the mobile app allows us to do that as well, right? You'll order on the phone before you come, uh, recognizing when you get close, that order goes into the queue. That way, when you get there, boom, 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 we bring it out to you and, and you're on your way. So yes, multiple, multiple, multiple different things are, are taking place here to help speed that along. The single op- owner-operator model certainly is our, our secret to, to success there because they, he or she is in the store every single day, building the team, um, getting buy-in from the team to be a, to be a great location and offering great customer service and great food. Um, so those, you know, those are the few key things that, that we're doing to try to get maximum efficiencies there.
And where did Chick-fil-A start? It was a, it, what abouts did it start?
Yeah. So actually it was, it was born in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, uh, Trucah, he was the founder and he, he opened up a little diner. Um, wasn't Chick-fil-A at the time. You know, he served burgers. He served all kinds of stuff, but it was a diner twenty, you know, twenty-four hours a day, six days a week. Um, but his sister, uh, had a shop in a mall and she said, man, you know, we need food in the mall to keep, um, you know, to keep our, to keep people in the mall longer so they shop more, right? So he went to the mall owner and said, hey, I'd, I'd love to open up a restaurant in the mall. And that's where Chick-fil-A was born. The first location was in South Paul Mall in Georgia. Prior to that, there was no food in malls. So kind of pioneered the food court as you know it right now. Um, and that, that was in nineteen sixty-seven and we opened up our first freestanding unit, which we're talking about here in nineteen eighty-seven. And that's been, you know, those two, those two growth avenues have been, um, a, a, a primary form of business outside of the, the college locations and the, um, the airports and things like that.
Well, thank you so much and thank you.
My pleasure.
Thinking of Livonia. And thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Lurk, I just wanted to tell you that, uh, you know, we had always gone to Chick-fil-A's in Virginia and other places as we were traveling out of state. We always found the locations to be extremely clean, extremely well-run with great people. And I'm, I'm excited to have that kind of experience here in Livonia. They really truly are operated like, uh, independent, you know, privately-owned, small businesses. Um, so that's one thing. The other thing is, you know, none of these places we went out of state had long waits or long lines. And it's not because the food wasn't good. It's just, it was kind of old news.
Right.
You get the benefit at this point of being exciting and new, but I have no doubt that the traffic and everything else will regulate and normalize over time. Uh, so thank you for bringing this to Livonia and we're happy to have you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Jolly.
All right, um, who else, um, would like to address the council or would like to, um, offer action on this? Councilmember.
I, I think we, do we have a motion already?
Twelve.
Yeah.
Oh. I'm so sorry.
McCullough.
All right. McCullough and Donovan. That seems like it was a lifetime ago. All right. Well, I, I really appreciate the discussion and, um, we will see everyone on the, um, that would be the thirteenth of January. Next Wednesday. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jarboe, and thank you, Mr. Lurk. And, uh, we'll look forward to, uh, seeing you again virtually on the thirteenth. And again, thank you for all your work to bring this great development to the city of Livonia.
Thank you for your time and have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Um, with that, we go to item number thirteen, which is a site plan petition. This comes to us from Planning Commission regarding petition twenty-twenty dash eleven dash zero eight dash zero seven submitted by Adams Park Development LLC, requesting to develop a site condominium, Adams Park, consisting of thirty-nine second-class homes on the properties located on the south side of Linden Avenue between and Middlebelt Roads, one-four-four-one-six Harrison Avenue and two-eight-two-zero-one Linden Avenue, the former Adams Elementary School site in the southeast quarter of Section twenty-four. Mr. Taramina.
Thank you, Madam President. The council is familiar with this, um, proposal. It involves the development of a. It involves the development of a condominium subdivision called Adams Park. It's at the former Adams Elementary School at the southeast corner of Linden and Harrison Avenues. This is an eleven point eight acre site. It's surrounded by residential to the east, the west and the north. Immediately to the south is Julie Park. The subject property is, as you know, is currently in the process of being rezoned from public land to R1, one family residential. Council gave first reading to the rezoning on November fourth and second reading and roll call are awaiting your review of this site plan. So the plan shows thirty-nine condominium lots. This is nearly identical to the last plan you saw at the time of first reading. Most of the lots, as you can see, has, have frontage on two streets with access to Linden. There is a cul-de-sac that extends south from the road along the west side of the development. Lots eleven through thirty-nine would access the internal streets and then lots one through ten, as you can see, along the west side of the property would have direct frontage and access to Harrison Avenue. All thirty-nine lots would meet or exceed the R1 lot size requirements. In fact, roughly half of the lots measure seventy feet in width. There are three open space park areas. The largest is in the south, southeast corner of the property and includes the stormwater detention basin. That basin occupies roughly sixty percent of that one point one acre private park. There are two other smaller open space areas. One is in the southwest corner of the property located here and then a, a narrow park area along Linden that would be used for landscaping and for signage. You'll note that there are, there's an access point, pedestrian access point located here between lots twenty-one and twenty-two for pedestrians. A second access, which does not appear on this particular rendering, would be located along the north side of the park and that would be for the, the access for maintenance equipment to access the detention basin. Everything else is pretty much, again, according to what you, you saw previously, Planning Commission reviewed this item, including the master deed and bylaws, and is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. We had an opportunity to look at this and put a lot of insight forward the first time around when we discussed the zoning. I think the developer has met with us and our demands very graciously here. I'm excited about this project. I think it's one of the best projects we have come before us in quite some time. I'm happy to offer an approving resolution. I'd like that on consent if there are no objections. Thank you.
Council, are there any objections to placing this on consent? All right. Seeing none, we will place this item on consent and I agree, I think, I think this is extremely...
I'm done.
I'm sorry. Who was it?
Madam President, if I may, we may wanna just make sure we go to audience communication on this.
I, I intended to, thank you, Mr. Jolly. Just wanted to, I was giving the rest of council an opportunity. And I need to go to another screen to see if anyone from the audience would like to address this, this item number thirteen, the site plan petition. I see no one. So we have an approving resolution offered for consent and we, that's where we are. So thank you, Mr. Jolly, and that was offered by Mr. Jolly. At this time, we go back to audience communication. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to communicate with the council on any item not on this evening's agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. Calling once, calling twice, third call. All right, seeing none, we are adjourned. Good night, Livonia. Thank you, Livonia TV. Thank you, Casey O'Neil IT, and thank you to everyone who was on the meeting tonight from the city and from the audience. Good night and thank you.